Mr. Tommy Kirk is going to open our meeting with a word of prayer.
Lord, come to you today. Thank you for this day that you give us, Lord. Lord, I thank you for this county that you blessed us with, pray you're in this meeting having business as much as you see. Lord, I pray for the fire police, work personnel, doctors, nurses, and workers, all the time. Pray for our military personnel in the factories where I should watch over them, watch over us. Don't use this mess for this one. Also, thank you for this day. We serve Jesus Christ.
Good evening.
Thanks, sir.
Y'all ready? We're gonna fly into the county administrator's first. Like to amend the fairgrounds budget for sixty-six hundred dollars that'll pay with utilities for the fairgrounds and the rain. They're going up like everybody else is.
Well, thank God this year was the lighting they put up. Call them asses. You can help them. Make sure you order two.
All right. Does it feel new?
Yeah, it does.
Put new lights on.
Let's call them asses.
All right.
You're paying my kids now?
Motion.
Thank you, boy.
Steven, there's a motion.
I'll fight him.
Randy with the second. All in favor. Pierce. Next, we need to delete HMC heavy manufacturing building paid off by and be that's a manufacturer. The original crew of Pierce.
We'll have to approve.
Randy.
Second.
Chad, all in favor. Motion carries. Next, we need to delete the HMC heavy manufacturing land paid off by the manufacturer.
Motion.
Chad, second from Sam. All in favor. Motion carries. Next, we need to delete an old trailer that was used for a home at First Saint. That ground, it was amazing, but it never was taken off and moved.
Motion.
She got a motion from Steve.
Same.
Randy. All in favor. Motion carries.
Just, I just can't stop.
Well, the problem is just, we're just, we're just running with that truck. Okay, next, we've got Chancery items. Need to approve a semi annual payment to the Chancery clerk for services as the clerk to the board.
Motion.
Motion.
Chad.
Sam, Sam got the second.
I know.
I want to buy it ahead. I'm gonna have to, let you talk. Got a roll. Got a full machine here. Next, discuss quotes for an equal here for cabinet departments.
We have all, uh, we had, or there's a need for twenty computers throughout the county. And we have two different quotes since we did departments throughout the county. The first quote is BCI for twenty-three thousand five five three point six oh. Twenty-three five five three point six oh. The other one is for M N J Technologies. And the amount twenty-four thousand, I'm sorry, twenty-five thousand eight nine eight point seven one. Twenty-five eight nine eight point seven one.
Forty-one point one.
Six hundred. Three five five three point six. Right, measure it. Uh, the ASR hardware. Yeah, that's, that's it.
Josh Drummond, please speak.
Yes, Josh Drummond from, uh, Prairie River City, our IT guy, has called these, his top D's, got support.
Where are we going?
They're going to different departments, change with needs on justice and the justice properties being on the taxes that they need. It's a very old computers and they are in Windows seven, which Microsoft is, or the computers are not going to be able to serve this my, uh, Windows seven. That means if they, we have to do, you have to upgrade it periodically and they haven't been upgraded in some kind. Seems like a lot of money and it is, but for this one time, it hasn't been done in several years.
Use their money and they were both, both provided.
Yes, there he is. And each of the departments that were going to, there is, there's money out here. We started working on this last year.
Oh, well, y'all knew it was coming.
We knew it was coming, so we started working on it. And everybody who spoke did their money's for it. Um, it's there and it's, it's not, if they're just wanting new computers, their computers don't shut down, we might be able to maintain it because once the, it's Microsoft's revenue, we got, at least get it from Microsoft.
But Josh looked at all this.
Josh, we'll do that. Yes, Josh is, he's responsible for.
I'll get him, check it over, see what's before.
Uh, we had a day.
Yeah, motion from Chad, approve a little bit. Randy with the second.
Yep.
All in favor. Yeah, we need to approve our county budget comparisons July. Got a little tip. Everything's on offer.
Yes, everything, Terry, we prepared all this, showing the state revenues for each department, everything's aligned, everybody's up, I mean, everything's aligned.
That motion to approve about. Motion Randy, second from Chad, all in favor. Motion carries. Inshore deletion of an old burner at the extension office.
Yes, the extension office said it's, it's very old, it has old technology on it, they keep, they accept, they keep anybody that update because it's old, so.
Motion.
Got a motion from Chad, second from Steve, all in favor. Motion carries. Next, we need to transfer funds from one mill mandatory levy falling to the general.
All right. Each year we do, you want to explain to?
Yeah.
If you're better.
When the rolls are approved, can't you spend a one mill levy until tax rolls are certified? Then it gets a letter of beer, so, you know, you got the letter in, so.
It's why.
From last year.
It's why you can surround the hand to give you a, we need to, we see that one.
Motion.
Got a motion from Steve, or second from Sam, all in favor. Motion carries. A resolution for town three for master water management district, twenty mill inch tax burden.
This came in, Terry, this came in late Friday, town parade deal. This is something we do every year. It's with the resolution, town parade with clean pond type of fresh new county setting the twenty-two, twenty-three mill inch rate.
What is the millage right on there?
I think it's seven.
Hold it, it's off.
Seven point five.
Seven.
Seven point five, next. Yes, sir.
We got a motion on Randy to approve the lot. Second. Who won?
I don't know.
You can give it to Sam also. All in favor. Motion carries. Not like this.
She's already on the same line.
I could follow.
Not waiting, we're, we're, we're.
They're marrying, man.
No, they can't, I'm like, I'm. Next, we got corner items.
Yes. We attend those producing as well. Oh, no, it's okay, miss, I think. I've started doing different, like. So he's gonna say. Did, that's a good thing.
One need. Steve made a motion to approve corner statements.
Second.
Second from Chad. All in favor. Motion carries. Next, we've got Justice clerk items. Discuss a new hire for a few times after clerk.
Uh, yes, this is Deborah Elliott. Um, who will be getting, um, next Monday, eight twenty-two if that's, if y'all approve. This is full-time citizens.
Got a motion up to Sam. Second. Chad with the second. All in favor. Motion carries. She also would like to put on a woman part-time as well.
Yes, this is board Gina Wood, um, her holiday, if y'all approve, she will start tomorrow. And it will be part-time. Yeah, it's part-time, it's part-time.
Train somebody's new people, she, she retired for labor, what's off.
Right.
Next, I believe. Got a motion to approve.
I'm like, why?
Got a motion from Chad. Second. Sam with the second. All in favor. Motion carries. She's also got an inventory deletion for a computer, a monitor, and a keyboard.
We just been sitting down at her office for over a year. They've got the new, they've got the new replacement, but I brought it up here.
That motion. Second. Motion from Sam, second from Randy, all in favor. Motion carries. Also, need to discuss closing the Justice clerk clerk's office for in-house training August thirty-first or September second, that's an entity, Thursday and a Friday. There's no court going on that week.
And just so everybody will understand, it's, it's Larissa and one other, and Katie, who has been there for a long time. And then she's got two new people plus ten kind of backs, she needs some time to train them. You stay in over two days so she can teach and have work with public when they're coming in, but she needs just, at least three days to work with them.
Second. Motion from Steve. Second from Chad, all in favor. Motion carries. All right. Sheriff is asking for travel, training, and one night lodging for a deputy to attend Taser Instruction Certification September twenty-first in Maritie. Motion. Second. Motion from Randy. Second from Steve. All in favor. Motion carries. Discuss quotes for installing a new hot water heater in the jail. Two quotes. Let's swing that. We got two. Like we got two quotes, North on Empire or like on plumber. Eighty-five gallon water heater with new fittings on swallers and the labor. This one went out, forty-two thousand five hundred fifty dollars. For a plumber. Replace eighty-five gallon hot water heater with all new fittings and supplies, including labor. Sixteen thousand four hundred eighty-seven dollars and nine cents. One, one of the two went out.
Sixteen.
Long and, and much, it was a place shop.
Eighty-five gallons, I'll be clear.
Stop! It's, it's not March first.
All right.
What's it called?
When they hit it up. You gotta have it up.
A lot of meat together here.
Washed each other, it's safe all day, every day.
It's more for a game than.
Stop.
Wash your fish.
Oh, I guess.
Six deep, avoid yourself.
Looking.
Two grand, they're for.
Ain't going through it. It ain't going through it.
I got a motion from Chad, suck the low lid.
I said.
Second from Randy. All in favor. Motion carries.
Bro, it's making though.
You can say. Next, we've got the tax assessment, I'd like to drive. First thing is discuss objections to the landlord's previous to taking under advisement.
They're showing this question.
No need to discuss that then.
Keep it.
Just keep.
Keep it on.
Keep it under advisement.
Please, sir. I'll explain.
Next, she's asking for federal expenses for deputy assessor attending a mapping September class, September twelfth through sixteenth in Stark. Going to that. Have a motion to approve this.
Motion motion.
Second. And motion from Sam. Second from Steve. All in favor. Motion carries. She's also got the July surrender tag list. Have a motion to approve that.
Motion. Second.
Motion from Chad, second from Randy. All in favor. Motion carries. We intend to fire departments.
We perceive shooting prices on state contract for that, uh, pro center and emergency equipment. Products, keep it one on. About nine thousand eight hundred seventy-eight dollar street.
Those are both quotes right there.
Yeah, the, uh, Rosenbauer quote is three thou, three hundred eighty-four thousand four hundred seventy-eight. And the, uh, Pierce, what's the price was three thousands, three hundred thousands, three hundred seventy-four thousand six hundred dollars. So the Pierce is, uh, nine thousand eight hundred seventy-eight dollars cheaper than Provo.
Have a motion to approve. Loads, boat.
I'm like a motion.
Motion from Chad. Second, Sam. You.
Yeah. I just signed it, dropped it, didn't you?
Yeah. All in favor.
I said my hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Yep. Higher than when I started.
Motion carries.
Hell of a red head.
All right. Move on road department to get the buck. It's a need to discuss.
Not getting any things, get your heart back starting, attend to everyone.
We got one.
We may have to have it for this meeting.
Need to discuss advertisement for heads to repair and do some maintenance on county road.
It's gotta be advertised, so, uh, I'll get, I'll get this. Is Mr. Larry, thank you.
They said I could go up there and they said it up.
Yeah, Mr. Larry, I'll get you after maybe about Kansas.
Have a motion.
I say.
Not Sam with the motion, Chad with the second. All in favor. Motion carries. Next, uh, discuss some quotes on that used four-wheel loader.
Nine three hundred five.
All right, I got one from Jay McMahon Farms on the John Deere four, forty-four H. Uh, loader, thirty thousand dollars. One here from Rick and Hall Equipment. Four forty-four wheel loader, same loader. Here's be the same. That's for forty-two thousand five hundred dollars. Make a motion to check the low bids. Got a motion from Randy. Suck the low, low bid, thirty-five. Second. Second from Steve. All in favor. Motion carries. So he's just going over the buck. Inshore deletion of an iPhone.
Smoke.
I got a motion. Chad, second from Steve.
Second.
Sam, Sam, got Sam.
That was my old phone, y'all wore it out. That gives me a scare.
All in favor. Motion carries. Next, I got a add-on, add-on road department, add-on on the circuit clerk. If you'd like to request removal, Helen Randall from, uh, bike account, two different ones. And her office. Motion to approve. Second. Motion from Randy. Second, Chad, all in favor. Motion carries. Move on solid wastes. They discuss posts on some dumpsters.
Hey, you have two answers, one, uh, two quotes, iron container, seven thousand two hundred seventy-five dollars, blunt container, seven thousand three hundred forty dollars, it's one.
No, two, two and a freight charge. Two, two, two four yards and two six yards. Iron container for four dumpsters is, and shipping is seven thousand two hundred seventy-five dollars. Phone container, seven thousand three hundred and forty dollars, so. Iron containers, just a little bit here.
And that's all we know.
Yes, sir.
Thing I'd say, different behind containers in South Carolina, phone containers in West Point, Mississippi. Kid, be good for, for, two four yards, two six yards. Rearload containers with beats drained, but then, uh, new black lids, the drain. Make a motion. Nothing, low bid. Motion. Sam, suck the low lid.
Randy, second.
Randy got the second.
Get the number, keep numbers under your, your punch.
All in favor.
Again.
Motion carries.
You ain't look good.
Now, now I guess it's time for our public hearing for possible approval of a new solid waste ordinance.
Anybody here for the solid waste ordinance public hearing, will state? Is it the same that y'all handed out a month or so ago? If it is like that, um, are there any, you know, for the board, is there anything else chopped off out? Um, I know that the Mitch made some classes that might be.
All right. I think the board would like to add in. One car per volunteer fire department.
Yeah.
In the county at no fee.
So every volunteer fire, volunteer fire station.
Yeah. You got ten to park, all stations.
What?
One car, ten service for no fee. And also all churches. In the county, one car would only, excluding the parcels.
Yeah.
And how.
So just the.
Just the.
Um, what about another very recent discussion about less than seeing a car of a ten-year period?
That's other you've done with the question.
Okay. Well, no, they might.
They wish those cars.
Or like an added additional car.
Four.
Ten dollars a month.
It's what it, what, it is.
Thought they ain't saying eight, but they always eight too.
I would probably. Pay eight dollars a month when you go back to this black plate.
Somebody will.
There's a machine.
So for an additional car, if they want one set up.
We want it seven, eight.
Eight.
Yeah, eight.
We got, we got all the way.
Eight, yeah, I'm gonna make off to us. Where's possible car that's a lot? Eight dollars, ten dollars.
Eight.
Already gone campus.
We're already thinking, we're thinking it's gonna be a little worse. Eight dollars.
Okay, been there, been thoughts and discussion about a household gets a part, uh, one part for a ten-year period.
Turn around, chill.
And then after that, if it's replaced, who's responsible for the cost of the new car?
Still county's car.
Reflexion would do it.
Within ten years, people are going up, there's no one, we're close.
Okay. One time.
Time in ten years.
Any, you got any questions, comments, and why the board's discussion? Is there a motion to pass the ordinance with these additional, uh, issues of this product?
No, don't, like, I had some that was Jimmy though, so. Yes, sir. What I've been telling them, you need to have a, you need to have a place board, place board, and will replace. Is that the way we're gonna do it? What if I stay up there?
Later.
We're going for a place too?
Later.
Your whole family. I was the only one moving out there for that time to come back, later on the day, so I started taking that back.
You know, that's.
No, they didn't eliminate, but we were a lot, taking back the house.
That's what I'm saying. Look a lot there. Bush halls. My own, my motion to approve.
If you ask, gonna take it back. I'll make some money.
Got a motion for Randy.
Sure.
Sorry, Steve. All in favor? Next. I guess. Change, change order for, uh. Changing number one is for projects number UC seventy-three now, and it is bridge.
Yeah, I had one of your, and she was definitely high close to one, dude.
High. Little strikes, definitely. Darbrow one up in the last three. What do you call it?
One in my chart memory.
I was like, anybody?
He's probably send the jacket off.
And then you'll count them a little bit.
Alright, I have a motion to approve this change order.
Okay.
Second. And motion from Randy, second from Steve. All in favor? Motion case. Next, we got a. Public hearing. Scheduled for our redistricting plan for Justice Court District. And Supervising District too.
Anybody here to speak about that redistricting plan? Mr. Larry, do you wanna make any comments about it?
Yes, we were asked to, uh, check into, uh, where we thought, um, Union County stood on redistricting. It was, um, reads are usually your high-low, uh, districts are trying to stay within ten percent. Uh, Union County was a little for a house and then, uh, however, when we looked at the changes, we tried our best to do minimal changes. Uh, uh, I won't say displaced, but to change, uh, people in, uh, one district to the other, uh, without just a lot of disruption, so most of it was done right in town, uh, being as fast as out some maps you can look at, you also will have the numbers that go with that. If y'all wanted to, he can present those, and if you have any questions, we're probably.
You think one?
I don't.
I want, I want, I want to know why he wants.
I mean, I thought I could do any of that.
No. And it's not a starter. You start with. This. County.
Hardly get where everybody can see, but I don't think it. Consider me the easiest. Let's go through the existing numbers and just tell. What that was in order for us to. Justify the petition based on percentages. Can tell, uh, what we changed.
Okay. In the county. As you're probably aware. You try to make each supervised district equal to each other. And in this case, when your population twenty-seven thousand, seven seventy-seven, you look at that first table. The, each district needs to have five thousand five hundred fifty-five persons. When we use the census block information, we discovered that, um, particularly. District five. Exceeded the average by ten point four four percent and, uh, two was eight point six six. Gave you a deviation, it says nineteen point oh six, it's actually nineteen point one oh. No big deal. So we. Took the. Census box. Living. For ten point two years. I know if you said the county through population. In two thousand ten. Twenty-seven thousand one thirty-four. And twenty-twenty, it increased twenty-seven thousand seven seventy-seven. So you had a slight increase, a lot of the counties we work with actually showed a decrease at a ten year period. The next page. Can see the numbers. After we made the changes. Now. We made all the changes, but inside the corporate limits of New Orleans. The colorful map you have there shows the areas that we changed. In doing that, we ended up with a deviation of nine point five four percent. Had to keep it less than ten. Uh, so that's, that's close. That's, we tried to make the least change that we made and still get under the ten percent. So we ended up. Nine point five four. Basically, we had to take people from district two and move them to district one. On the west side of New Albany, you can see on the map. Uh, there's subdivision, I don't know the name, been in three Conacello, Street Oxford Street. And been the area on the north side of Highway thirty. All of this is just on west side of Highway seventy-eight. I believe. Total of. Three hundred thirteen people. Moved district two to district one. Then on the other side, right here downtown. We had to change people from district three to district five. And one little block of district four to district five. And I believe the change. Amount of, I told him two hundred and seventy people went into district five and I believe forty-seven came out of the team. So you have a map showing inside the city, changes that made. Discuss that, we go to each other.
Anybody got any questions, concerns, comments? Alright.
Alright. When you change. Supervisor lines, you're gonna fix the justice court district. Well, we've got two. This is what they possibly want to see first. That's inside New Albany, and this is the whole county. And you justice court districts, basically the east side of county operates in the east and west side of west. And changes again were made right in here, now the ones in the west didn't affect the, the numbers. Because it's all within the west, but when we changed it, district three and district four, it changed at east. You look at the table. You have a total of population, twenty-seven thousand seven seventy-seven. Divided in two parts. Thirteen thousand eight eighty-nine. The district variation of actually thirteen point oh seven percent, which exceeds again the ten percent deviation. Made the changes. Supervisor districts. That resulted in the justice court changes and we brought it down to nine point eight five percent. Now that again, very close to ten, but we were trying to make the least change possible. And in Union County, you have one split precinct, and that's courthouse. The north part of courthouse, I believe is in the east, south part of courthouse is, uh, in the west. So we followed the supervisor lines. To have two districts. But we still have to keep the split precinct and the courthouse precinct. And it's still divided, just like it was before, and it's, uh. It's. Has a dividing line. Simplify the distance inside. District. This is the one that shows. The dividing line between the east and the west comes down and goes, uh, right through. Railroad crossing the river. Then, fortunately, courthouse district, we had to keep the courthouse in that district, because that's the whole place. So this part of three is in the east, the southern part, uh, is in the west, but the dividing line is at the same place it was. In order to get it in closer, we would add a split, another precinct, and we wanted to avoid that. So. That's why it's a little bit high. Like supervisor was a little bit high, to try to make the least change possible. And we ended up. We end with nineteen point eight five, nine point eight five percent for justice court districts.
Questions, concerns, comments? Board, some discussion?
I'm gonna do it. Good guy.
Look, it's a new paper here.
Oh, yeah.
Two. Here's another map we made of inside New Albany, we left some of those colors off. Might have a better look, we're gonna print something, using that without all those colors, so.
It's one thing to be helpful, since most people get their information off the internet. See, if we could get the pale, digitized maps of these districts that we could post online. We'd simply post it, if, if there's, if they are sufficiently detailed, uh, we could post it, it wouldn't cost the county any money. And people could look at it and perhaps determine what district they're in. It need, need to be simply in a form, simple PDF, which you guys can do.
Can you email me that, Larry?
Right now?
Can you email me a PDF?
Yeah, sure.
The land could link it on, on, on the newspapers.
Uh, that's.
Still, it's gonna be explained in a lot of posts where they live.
Yeah, that's no problem, board authorized it. You know, pass it on. Who's it gonna go to?
We would send.
You send it to CJ for office. Okay. Would you have to write an email?
Okay.
Question?
Uh, I'm just wondering, at what point will I get the, um, I guess legal descri- description? And how does that come down?
Once this is approved, we will complete writing the legal descriptions and get those to Mr. Rogers. For putting in a board order, that way you'll have the script of supervisor district, justice court district, voting precincts. You'll have descriptions of all of them. And, and we can furnish you PDFs and our map, you just tell us what you need and we can get those to you.
Does that map have section lines?
Yes.
I think one with section lines would be good for Mike and I to take those legal description and get it down to the address right. And the reason I ask is because I think everything needs to be done before the first of January, and we have an election. November, and for about eight weeks or longer, I'm locked out of the system for making any changes. So it's gonna be a kind of tight situation, and probably be December before I can probably do any changes. Because that election will come down, um. September fifteenth, probably, in about a month, I'll be locked out for doing changes because of the.
Larry, you can send me the PDFs, I can print or whatever side of my office. You ain't gotta be printing all of them.
That'd be good, and the tag office would help you too.
We'll, we'll furnish anything you need. I, I guess from the standpoint, being described it, once the board sets a plan, and it is the plan, that he, he will write those descriptions. He probably already started, but I don't know that. Uh, so it won't take us very long to get it to you with the minimal changes, hopefully. You're talking twenty-seven thousand five hundred people, we'll include about five hundred.
Yeah, I'm swamped.
It's about as good as we could do. Mr. Rogers might answer this, but I, I guess you put an effective date in this board order. As of January first would be the effective date of the change, you've got another election between that and then, you're gonna use the old.
That's right.
Lines and what kind of elections you got in November?
Uh, it's the, the general, I mean, it's our circuit judges, change through judges, school board, I had to get my school board changes for this. And then of course your, um, US senate are represented.
True.
No. I think, Larry, this is present, you're, y'all are presenting this as the final plan to approach, right?
Good.
Board order, say that?
Well, we do, but I'm gonna, I'll put a board order that has legal scripts. So, I mean, I think that, you know, we're here for the public hearing, if there's no further comment yet.
Move forward.
Yeah, we can move forward, if y'all want to make, somebody wants to make a motion to adopt the plan and for both districts supervisors and justice court as proposed by Mr. Larry, then.
I'm working on. But I would do that effective date, uh.
January.
Alright, I've got a motion for Randy to some of these persons.
She's not far.
Steve, you with the second? All in favor?
Uh, these, these are your maps.
Okay.
Your property, we're leaving that to you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Larry, hi, thank you. Uh, motion to adjourn.
Yeah, y'all just stay in the eight on, sounds like a heart.
Yeah.
It on my list. Here, you need a second.
Sounds good. I'm surprised.
Doug, you need a minute?
I have a motion to adjourn. Hurry to get us.